Would Vince lead us with the pleasure of leaving please?
Chairman, Vince is occupied at the moment, so I'll leave the pledge.
Alright, Ally, thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the states of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Secretary, since we just did a roll call, we'll consider that to be a roll call at this point in time. I now invite the Commission's Secretary to describe the way the public can access this virtual meeting.
Thank you Chair. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaanna-video/live and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial 1-669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID 315965149, followed by pound. When prompted for a participant ID, just enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial *9. When the comment period is open, I will call on you by the last three numbers listed on the caller ID. After you are called upon, you must press *6 to unmute yourself. After you have unmuted yourself, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes. I will alert you when your time is up. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Madam Secretary. We'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone that would like to speak at this time on non-agenda items?
If you'd like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, please dial *9 now. I'll wait a couple moments. We do not have any speakers, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, we will close the public comments on non-agenda items and will move to the consent calendar. With respect to the consent calendar, Item A, we'd like to get a motion on the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of September 28, 2020.
Just a reminder.
Second, I need to abstain. This is Paul Morrissey. I was present for all the meetings.
Okay, so, we have a motion from Ken Nguyen. Do we have a second?
Second, Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
So, Madam Secretary, we do a roll call on the vote for Motion A, the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of September 28, 2020.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morrissey abstaining?
I abstain.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fan?
I just want to get a quick thing that I want to get clarified. Although we were not, or I was in the entire meeting, as long as I reviewed it, I voted on, right?
That is correct.
Oh yes, that is correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
What she said, what was said was that if you weren't in the entire meeting, you could still vote on the minutes of the meeting at this point in time.
No, I'll still abstain.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Commissioner Rivera.
Hi.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Hi.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes 5-1 with Commissioner Morrissey abstaining.
Okay.
And Commissioner Garcia absent. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, what we'll do is we're going to hold off on Motion B at this point in time if we can. Just, we are expecting Commissioner Garcia to join us, but I don't want to mark her as absent as of yet. So this is now the end of the consent calendar. We'll move on to the business calendar, public hearings. Public hearing protocol. I will now review the process of the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. A, staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the Commission. B, the public hearing will then be opened. C, the applicant will be given an opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. D, members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. E, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public in limited to five minutes. F, the public hearing will then be closed and brought back to the Commission for discussion and formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address. State whether you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement will include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, emotion, repetition. A clear, concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. This is now the time and place to consider Item Number One, environmental review of Number 2018-13, site plan review of Number 2020-03, variance Number 2020-06, and amendment application Number 2020-04 for the property located at 409 and 509 East Fourth Street. Please note, the decision on the site plan review and variance and corresponding amendment to the environmental impact report is final unless appealed within 10 days. Recommendation on the amended amendment application and corresponding addendum to the environmental impact report will be forwarded to the City Council at a later date for final determination. Before we begin, do any of the Commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item? I'll start with Commissioner Morrissey.
Yes, I received a overview presentation from the applicant.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
No, I don't. I don't have any. Thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes, I received a thing thing overview presentation of the application from the applicant.
Okay. Commissioner Fan?
As soon as I spoke up last time, I received a presentation from the applicant.
Okay. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Same for me. Had a presentation.
Okay. And for myself, I had a discussion with regards to certain aspects of the project with the applicant on the phone. Okay. At this point in time, Pedro, you're going to give us a presentation?
Yes, Chairman, give us just one second.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Chairman. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting on the Fourth and Mortimer Mixed Use Development Project. The Commission may recall the work-study presentation on this item at the last Planning Commission meeting. As a reminder, this project requires adoption of an addendum to the Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, for the Transit Zoning Code, and requires approval of Site Plan Review Number 2020-3 and variance Number 2020-06. In addition, the project requires Planning Commission recommendation to the City Council for adoption of the addendum to the Transit Zoning Code EIR and approval of Amendment Application Number 2020-04 for the Transit Zoning Code. The project is proposed to be located in downtown on two city blocks, addressed as 409 and 509 East Fourth Street. 409 will be referred to as Site A and 509 will be referred to as Site B. These two sites are located on the northeast intersections of Fourth and French Streets and Fourth and Mortimer Streets. Site A is approximately 1.423 acres in size and Site B is approximately 1.292 acres for a combined total of 2.715 acres in total. Site A has a general plan designation of district center and a transit zoning code with a downtown subzone designation. Site B has a general plan designation of urban neighborhood and a transit zoning code with an urban neighborhood 2 subzone designation. Both sites are surrounded by commercial and single and multifamily residential to the north, east, and to the south. To the west of the sites are more commercial and a city parking garage. I do want to note that the existing commercial facility, Ming's Auto Repair, located on the northeast corner of Fourth and Mortimer Streets, is not part of the proposed project and will remain. These next slides provide site photos of both Site A and B. On the first slide, you can note a photo of Site A, and this is a Fourth and French Street intersection looking north. The second photo is taken along Fourth Street, also looking north towards the existing Northgate Gonzalez Market. The first photo of Site B is taken from Minter, looking southeast towards Ming's Auto Shop, again not part of the project. And the second photo is taken from Fourth Street, looking north. The proposed project includes demolition of the existing Northgate Gonzalez Market and surface parking lot on Site A, as well as the demolition of the existing commercial auto service building and accessory structures on Site B. After demolition, the applicant proposes to construct a mixed-use community on both sites, containing 169 residential units, 11,361 square feet of leasable commercial area, and 422 onsite parking spaces. The development would also provide onsite amenities, which would include a roof deck, courtyard, pool, dog run, and fitness areas. Lastly, as part of the project, the applicant is proposing to change the subzone designation for Site B from urban neighborhood 2 to urban center subzone. The next slides provide the proposed site plan. Site A will contain a mixed-use commercial residential structure with 99 residential units, approximately 3,800 square feet of tenant space designed for an eating establishment, 7,500 square feet of retail space, a resident and leasing lobby, site amenities, a bicycle storage room, and a four-and-a-half-story above-ground parking garage with 230 parking spaces. The building would be seven stories in height along Fourth Street, as well as the intersections of Fourth and French and Fourth and Mortimer Streets. The building would be five stories in height along the remaining French Street and Mortimer Street frontages. Site A would also include approximately 28,500 square feet of open space, including 15,345 square feet of public slash common open space and 8,428 square feet of private open space. Site B is designed to be purely residential and will contain 70 units and a four-story above-ground parking garage with 192 onsite parking spaces. The residential building would be accessed by a lobby from Mortimer Street and would be five stories in height across the entire site. Along the Fourth Street frontage, Site B would include a courtyard and the residential units, and Site B would include approximately 1,600 square feet of open space, including 13,000, excuse me, 16,000 square feet of open space, including 13,233 square feet of public slash common open space, and approximately 2,800 square feet of private open space. The common open space for both sites would include an amenity courtyard, a dog run. In addition, the project features private open decks for 59 units on Site A and 48 units on Site B. The next couple of slides provide renderings of the proposed project from a couple of different perspectives. The first one on this slide depicts Site A at the intersection of Fourth and French Streets, looking northeast. I do want to note that this photo was provided by the applicant as an updated high-resolution rendering from perhaps, different from perhaps what the Commission might have received earlier this afternoon. The next rendering is also of Site A, looking northeast at the project's Fourth and French Street corner. You'll see that it's kind of a closer image of the last rendering provided. The next slide the Commission will see is a rendering along Fourth Street, looking north at Site A. And the last rendering is also along Fourth Street, but looking west at Site B and Site A. The next series of slides provides an overview of the design of both buildings. Both sites have been carefully designed to be integrated within the existing development pattern of downtown. As seen on these elevations, the ground floor of Building A is designed in the Main Street Commercial Architectural Style, consistent with identifiable patterns typical of downtown buildings. The building's varied height from seven stories to five stories generates a smooth transition from the higher density character of the intersection of Fourth and French Street towards the lower density character of the single-family residence to the north and to the east. A landscape buffer is provided for each site, creating a transitional space between the top of the structure and the street level while also providing screening at the lower level of the garages adjacent to the single-family residences. In addition, the building's architecture is designed to lessen the massing of the project with its elevations featuring articulation, multiple volumes, and varied architectural styles to mimic the appearance of multiple buildings. Building B's purely residential design complements the existing multifamily developments along Fourth Street. Each site has its own unique architectural vernacular defined by the scale, the facade articulation, the roof forms, the materials, and detailing. Varied material slash color palettes are also featured on both buildings, in addition to varied window recesses and decorative elements. While color palette is varied across both sites, care has been taken to provide a unified look to correspond to the surrounding buildings. Both structures feature durable brick veneer, glass, smooth stucco finishes, metal awnings, and textured block and panels. Like Site A, Site B also provides a landscape buffer, creating a transitional space between the top of the structure and the street level, while also providing a screening at the lower level of the garages adjacent to the single-family residences to the north and to the northeast. In 2010, an environmental impact report, or EIR, was prepared to evaluate the potential impacts associated with the adoption of the Transit Zoning Code, which was anticipated to result in potential development of approximately 4,075 residential units, 387,000 square feet of retail development, and an additional 15.5 acres of open space within the city. An addendum to a previously certified EIR is prepared when the lead agency is asked to approve modifications to an existing project, for which an EIR has already been certified. In this case, the Transit Zoning Code EIR is that project. An addendum evaluates the requests and modifications and determines whether subsequent EIR review is required. Moreover, pursuant to State Secret guidelines, when an EIR has been certified for a project, the city shall not require a subsequent or supplemental EIR or negative declaration for this project unless the lead agency determines that one or more of the following conditions are met. One, substantial project changes proposed that would result in new or substantially more severe impacts than disclosed in the previous EIR. Two, substantial changes in circumstances that would result in new or substantially more severe impacts than disclosed in the previous EIR. Or three, significant new information has come to light that shows there will be new or substantially more severe impacts than disclosed in the previous EIR. The Fourth and Mortimer Development Project required preparation of studies including, but not limited to shade and shadow, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, cultural resources, traffic noise, vibration, hydrology, and sewer capacity analysis. The addendum concluded that no new or substantially greater impacts would occur with implementation of the proposed development when compared to those identified in the 2010 EIR. Therefore, an addendum is the required environmental document pursuant to the State's Secret guidelines. The proposed project includes construction of two new line-block building types, which is a building that conceals a public garage or other faceless building. However, the current subzone designation on Site B, which is UN2, does not permit the line-block building as a permitting building type. Therefore, the project would require an amendment application for a zone change on Site B from UN2 to the urban center or UC subzone designation. The UC subzone was selected in order to maintain aesthetic consistency with the proposed building on Site A, to provide a more harmonious design of both sites as they're being developed and managed together as one project. The UC subzone allows Site B to be designed in the same building type as Site A, while allowing each site to have a unique architectural vernacular that complements the neighborhood and that is integrated with the existing development pattern in downtown. The UC subzone designation also ensures an appropriate scaling down between downtown and the surrounding residential neighborhoods to the north and to the northeast. This next slide provides a view of the established subzones within the current Transit Zoning Code. The area affected is shown in the black dotted line and in the blown-up areas to the right. You can see that the entire block where Site B is proposed would be changed from UN2 to UC. In reviewing the existing Transit Zoning Code map seen, it can be noted that the original intent of the Transit Zoning Code was to place UC subzones as both a buffer and transition between the uses permitted in the high-density downtown subzone designation and the less-intense UN2 neighborhood designation. With the exception of Site B, all of the adjacent downtown subzone parcels in the Transit Zoning Code are surrounded by the UC subzone parcels. The proposed change to the UC designation would be consistent with the existing adjacent parcels that surround the downtown subzone designations in Transit Zoning Code. The proposed project is also requesting a variance from the Seneana Municipal Code for an increase in the allowable building size and massing standards for the line-block building proposed on Site B. The Transit Zoning Code requires that portions of buildings between three and five stories be only 85% of the ground floor's volume. You can think of this concept if you're imagining a wedding cake design where the first and second floor are the base of that cake and the floors from the third to the sixth floor are supposed to be smaller in size, given that wedding cake design concept. As proposed, a third through fifth floor of Site B would be 100% of the building's ground floor volume, exceeding the allowable ratio by 15% on each floor. Therefore, a variance application would be required to facilitate the construction of the building on Site B. In analyzing the variance request, staff believes that the following analysis warrants staff's recommendation of approval of the variance. Site B has a smaller-than-average lot depth and width compared to most of the lots in the downtown area. While portions of Site B meet the average lot width and depth, a majority of Site B is smaller than average. Site A takes advantage of a full city block with complete street frontages along every street, while Site B is interrupted by an adjacent parcel not part of this project. This parcel is approximately 6,200 square feet in size, or about 50 by 124 feet. This results in Site B having a smaller-than-average street frontages along Mortimer and Fourth Street. Without the increase in the allowable building size and massing standards, the project would need to be redesigned, resulting in several impacts to the feasibility of the site's development. These impacts would include a loss of parking spaces by requiring a reduction in the size of the parking structure, an incompatible design and unbalanced composition of the massing on the project's site, and/or a smaller building footprint that would reduce the building's interior floor area and individual unit sizes. Staff would also like to note that the applicant did prepare a fiscal and economic impact analysis for the project. The analysis concludes that the project would result in a net positive fiscal impacts to the city, the Business Improvement District, and will create new and temporary jobs. This includes 860, excuse me, this includes 806 indirect or induced new jobs, of which 35 would be permanent. The fiscal impacts include 7.8 million in gross positive revenues to the city, including 2.9 million in property tax revenues over a 25-year period, and 2.4 million in expenditures' costs to the city over the same period. This would result in 5.4 million in net new positive general funds revenues over a 25-year period. With that, staff concludes this presentation tonight. I'm available for questions at this time, and I would also like to note that we have the city's environmental consultant from Rinkon on the line, the city's principal engineer on the line, the applicant, their architect, and their traffic engineers. Thank you.
Thank you Pedro. At this point in time, we'll ask the Commissioners if there are any questions of staff. We'll start with Commissioner Garcia.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to first disclose that I was contacted by or approached by the Kennedy Commission and Exclusivas de la Odeja on the project. So I have one question of staff, and that's if you can help me understand how the zone change does or does not impact the affordable housing requirement since we are looking at increasing density.
Yes.
If you can.
Yes, thank you Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner may be aware that the ordinance was revised recently and it's in effect as of, I believe, a couple of days ago. What that change resulted in was changing some of the language that would have resulted in a zone change triggering the Housing Opportunity Ordinance to now include only general plan updates triggering the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. In this case, the project is in compliance with the general plan designation, including the FAR. And since it's only a zone change, it does not trigger the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. Moreover, the UN2 designation does allow 50 dwelling units per acre, and this project is proposing 54, slightly above that. And the Transit Zoning Code is not kind of a prescriptive density plan. It does provide kind of a range of densities allowable, depending on the building type, and depending whether the project meets kind of the development standards. So, in this case, in our review, staff determined that the project was not triggering of the Housing Opportunity Ordinance.
As a follow-up to that Pedro, and really I'm hoping to understand, if the net effect of the zoning variance is to essentially allow for the increase in density housing, isn't that also then the net effect of why we have the housing ordinance? Am I getting this? You know, I understand that the two amendment allowed is only triggered once we have a request for a general plan amendment, but I thought that the net effect essentially was really whenever there was a request for increase density. was really whenever there was a request for increased density regardless of the general plan amendment or zoning variance that that's really what we would look to for affordable housing or requiring, yeah, requiring some affordable housing. Because that's where I'm really confused. Are we using a technicality here to get away from a requisite when we're looking at the spirit of the issues here?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Garcia, this is Mintai. So when the WHO ordinance was adopted by the city council, the council was very clear that the council only wants to have the WHO trigger under the general plan and that the idea is that if the general plan density is provided, the zoning would be consistent with the general plan. So therefore, the density has already been considered under the general plan, and therefore, the zone change is not triggered. That was very clear, was the point of discussion in the city council process.
And just so that I understand it, so even if the net effect is one of the same, I guess, I guess, not the concern, but the question really is, as long as we can couch it in terms of a zone variance, then it's going to be fine on the affordable housing issue? Is that?
The general plan is already-
Is it accurate?
Right, right. If it's a zoning change, it does not trigger. I think, I think we're still, we're still struggling with this a little bit, and then I get it. So the general plan is not being changed. Is this the current general plan or is this the proposed general plan?
Thank you, Chairman. This is the current general plan of urban neighborhood. It's not being changed on Site B.
And if we looked at, if we looked at the new general plan, the proposed general plan, where would it stand on that?
There is no change to the general plan on either of these two sites, and so we're talking about Site B here, which does have a different designation than Site A, but Site B is not changing the general plan designation. The current and the continued general plan designation would be urban neighborhood, UN.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia, I'm sorry to jump in.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because it helps me clarify. There is a, did I not, did I get this wrong, where there is a change from UN2 to UC on one of the lots here, is it A or B?
You're correct, Commissioner.
And it's that zoning, and it's that zoning variance that allows for the higher density. And so I think that's, I mean, that's really, and I really wanted to just understand, I think from a technical standpoint, I understand what you're saying, that when the WHO was amended, it was then so so that it would only apply for general plan amendments, and prior to that, it was also applied to zoning variance. So, but I think that under, maybe Lisa, you can help me out here, but I think that we're also required to seek or afford, you know, for, require affordable housing when there's a density increase. And I think that's, really, I want to understand how we reconcile the two from a legal perspective and from a policy perspective so that I understand that going forward.
Sure, we can let our city attorney weigh in, but just as a matter of clarification, the commissioner referenced variance. The variance isn't applicable for the zone change. This is an amendment application, so that's just one point of clarification. And two, the UN2 does allow 50 dwelling units per acre. The change on this site is really to allow for the allowable building type, the line-block building type, which isn't permitted on this specific site. So UN2 overall permits 50 dwelling units per acre. That's the maximum range that it permits. The site, to be kind of consistent with, you know, a two parcel development, which is unusual for San Ana, needed to change the subzone designation from UN2 to UC to allow this building type. So that's really the biggest reason for the change, to allow kind of a harmonious design for the downtown development.
So what I'm hearing is that, and I see this, under the current UN2 subzone, residential density is up to 50 dwelling units per acre are permitted under the current UN2.
That's correct.
And we are not changing the UN2 subzone at this point in time?
We're changing the UN2 subzone on Site B to UC to take advantage of the afforded line-block building type, which is allowed in the UC but not allowed in the UN2.
Okay, but then based on that, so we're going from UN2 to UC, and UC is also density up to 50 dwelling units per acre?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia. Do you have any other questions?
Not for now, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, Commissioner Morrison.
Commissioner Morrison?
Ms. Commissioner Morrison.
Sorry about that, I would need it. If I do have a question for staff, it looks like on one of the renderings, there's possibility or, there is possibility of having a restaurant use at the location. I was wondering if there's an opportunity for, are we, are we allowing restaurants as a matter of practice in the future to utilize the public sidewalk for outdoor dining?
Thank you, Commissioner. The city currently has an outdoor dining application process. A lot of restaurants, you know, pre-COVID, were interested in utilizing some space in the right-of-way for kind of an enclosed area. So we have an existing established process for that. My understanding is that most of the area shown on this rendering and proposed on the plan would be entirely within the project boundaries, the private site boundaries. But if there's an opportunity to do any sort of outdoor dining and it works within the parameters of the outdoor dining application process, that could be a possibility.
Okay, yeah, I was looking at the plan. It's hard to, I actually can't, I've zoomed in on it, I can't read what the dimension is along Fort Street, the distance from the property line. It's like the building's set back maybe four foot three, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, those are intended to be almost like a zero lot line, so they will range from anywhere to zero to maybe about three feet or so.
But in the area of the retail and where they're calling out the restaurant.
Yes, I don't have the-
We have three foot seven on one side, and in the retail, it might be four foot three, I can't read the dimension.
They don't have the plans in front of me, but that sounds about right. There is a range, and the intention and allowable setbacks within that downtown are to have that zero lot line, to take advantage of that public and private interaction with the urban scale.
Yeah, well, I'm concerned about, you know, I think the objective is to activate the street, and if you're going to have, unless you have space to do that with outdoor seating or outdoor dining, it's not going to happen. So I'm just trying to clarify the dimension there and what the policy is in part of the city for allowing use of, if we don't have space to do it within the private property, what is the possibility that it happens out into the public sidewalk area?
Understood. And as mentioned, there is that existing outdoor dining application process that we work with, with our public works agency.
But I'm going to jump in and ask the question on that. That, that policy is pre-COVID, is it not?
Correct, correct. There's been exceptions made during COVID.
Right, and so I think, I think the challenge that we're looking at with this is that, you know, we don't know what the new norm is going to be, but in the meantime, it probably for the next year or so could be more outdoor than indoor dining, and I think that Tom is looking at trying to sort out what opportunity is there? Is it something that can be bumped out into the street? Or is it something that is strictly going to be held to the sidewalks?
Understood. Hopefully, by the time that this project is completed in two or three years, we won't have to worry about COVID. But in the meantime, they, if you've seen on the rendering, they have kind of taken into account this storefront design that opens up to allow kind of the ventilation. So there's more of an opportunity to have kind of an outdoor approach to dining versus kind of a fully enclosed. And these types of changes, you'll start to see in a lot of designs as kind of the impacts from COVID as well, where maybe you'll have either partially or maybe all-outdoor designs. So I wouldn't be surprised if we see them more often.
So where, if I'm looking at this slide presentation, are you referring to, with the renderings, are you referring to like slide 10?
On the current image that we have, the ground floor restaurant, maybe on the second or third bay along Fort Street, you have the storefronts that are opening up almost like an accordion style. And those are similar to maybe what you've seen at Lucille's at Main Place Mall where you have a storefront design that's just kind of, or windows that just completely open up to outdoors.
Where would I find that in the, in the presentation package?
It's currently up on slide 10. This is a revised photo that was just, or rendering that was just provided to the applicant, by the applicant today, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't have it in your packet. It's up on the screen now.
Okay. All right. Tom, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, you know, I'm not sure what the, what the policy is on utilizing public space, if the restaurant serves alcohol. I just want to, you know, I think it's a great plan, I just want to make sure that, because it really does activate the street visually in the renderings, but I want to make sure in a practical sense that there's enough space to do that. If a restaurant goes in there, that they'll be able to have outdoor seating. And inherently, it doesn't look like they have space to do that. So that's, that's my primary concern. So maybe, you know, when we talk with the applicant, we can address that further.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Commissioner Nguyen. No question, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Rivera.
Yes, quick question. I believe it's slide 19, the transit zoning code map. So comparing the on-site B, is there a reason why that, that section was said as urban neighborhood, the UN2, rather than the urban center? It seems like everything else that covers is urban center, and for some reason, just that site B is urban center. So I'm just curious if there was a reason for that when the, when the map is done, or...
Thank you, Commissioner Rivera. You know, it's unsure as to kind of why that happened. It might have been an oversight, but as you can see in what we described, that UC does serve as a buffer from the higher intensity downtown to the UN2. So it's kind of a weird situation that kind of happened. Also do want to note that at the time of establishment of the transit zoning code, this streetcar really wasn't contemplated. So the UC designation really is more kind of apt for that light rail coming through, kind of providing different molds of transportation too. So, and it's presented, I think, in a work study, the OSG streetcar runs right through Site A and B, actually, and bisects it, so it'd be a good opportunity there.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, thank you. I would just feel there's a reason to why, if there was something oversight, but, all right, thank you, that's it. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Fan.
Hi, yes, my questions have to, so we received some correspondence, one of which is addressing the fact that we are, we have an addendum that is, I'm sorry, just, well, I can't address that because there was a 2010 EIR, which we looked at, and this is obviously a somewhat development, right? And so we can kind of talk a little bit about that. Obviously, I know that the staff position is that, you know, it's consistent with the 2010 EIR, but it would make a bar. Talk a little bit more about that and the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner. We do actually have our consultant on the line, but before we, you know, determine if further follow-up with her is needed, you know, mentioned at the presentation that we did have studies provided for this project. And those studies kind of, well, they determined that there wouldn't be any sort of additional impacts further from what was analyzed as part of the 2010 EIR. So really, pursuant to kind of the State Sequel Guidelines, we can't really consider any other document. It has to be the addendum, because those three kind of pronged requirements weren't identified as part of the overall review and analysis of the addendum. So the language is pretty clear and says shall be an addendum. Don't know if our consultant would like to maybe clarify a little bit more if she's on the line. Suzanne?
Sure, this is, yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
So, this is Suzanne, my consultant, we, so our lead agency must determine whether or not the original EIR retains informational value, which is, which is determine if at least some of the modified projects were considered in the original document. So the original EIR is a trampoline EIR that provides detailed impacts and measures that directly apply to the project. So it, the original EIR definitely maintains informational value. And as we're out the addendum, all of the applicable mitigating measures will be applied to the project. So like one that we, I'm sorry, I just said that, that it's no impact what was found in the EIR, so we do believe that that, the addendum is the appropriate document.
Okay, thanks. I, you know, obviously, whenever there's something like this, we always, you know, get comments, and I just wanted that we address that on the record. And I think that the, I think my questions have been asked, so if I, I think I'm moving on, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay. For the moment, I'm, I'll hold off on staff. I think we probably have a number of questions for the applicant itself on the topic. So at this point in time, we'll close the discussion with staff and Pedro. Unless anybody has anything else they want to ask the question on, Commissioner Garcia?
Nothing at this time, thanks.
Commissioner Morrison? No, no further questions. Commissioner Nguyen? No question, thank you. Commissioner Rivera? Nothing at this time, thanks. Commissioner Fan?
Nothing right now.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No, thank you.
Okay, let's move on then. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication? Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this topic?
Yes, we received a total of 51 comments. Four of those were in opposition and 47 were in support. Those have been distributed to the commission and also posted on our website.
Okay, so that was 51 total comments and four against and 47 in favor.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing at this point in time. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter?
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you. We can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you. So good evening. My name is Juan Garcia. I'd like to address you, Honorable Chairperson McLaughlin, and honorable members of the planning commission and city staff. Tonight with me, we have Andrew Nelson, who is the principal at Red Oak Investments, along with Carl Middleton, President of Northgate Real Estate, Aaron Speedy, Mr. of KTGY, who's our project architect, and Mr. Richard Loretto of LLG, who is the traffic engineer. On behalf of our team at Northgate, Hudson Pilots, and Red Oak Investments, we want to thank you for allowing us to provide a brief overview of the proposed project. We also want to thank Pedro and the city staff for all their diligence and hard work to get us to this point in time. We take great pride this evening in presenting you with a quality mixed-use development project for the downtown area, in which we believe the city can also take great pride. After we seen from Pedro's conceptual presentation, he planned to introduce an aesthetically pleasing and high-quality development project. You were able to see a couple of years that depict potential artistry. As requested, we plan to seek insights and guidance from local artists and organizations to develop final artistry that reflects the history, culture, and the people of Santana. Northgate is blessed to be celebrating its 40th anniversary and has been living Santana since 1993. Its success is largely due to our loyal customers, associates, and community, many whom we consider family. Additionally, we have six stores in Santana with over 1,200 associates and nearly 600 of them Santana residents. Our plans call for a much larger market to replace the current one at a nearby location. The new market is going to have a stretched mercado format. We will have more parking to provide for safer pedestrian and auto circulation. Want to note that no employees will end up losing their job as a result of the market's closure. We will be looking for other places to put that right there within the area. A proposed mixed-use development is one which the Benfides family will hold long term as our plans are to continue to be a part of the fabric of the city. Also important to note is that the Benfides family is very committed to affordable housing and has and hopes to soon announce an opportunity that we are pursuing. The development is consistent with the intent of the transit zoning code. It puts mixed-use housing and retail in the right place in the downtown, next to where the Orange County streets are lined with run. It is part of our code at 2.3 feet falls per unit. As was depicted in a couple of the renderings several are presented, our vision for the development is to enhance the neighborhood, promote the production of the experience, and help to activate the street area with new retail businesses, which ideally generates outdoor activity. The development is projected to make significant economic contributions to the city's new impact, vitality, economic stimulus, and jobs, which are currently estimated at $9.3 million net benefit to the city's general fund over 25 years. 500,000 for parks, 450,000 for schools, along with hundreds of temporary construction jobs and dozens of permanent future jobs. And thank you for your time and consideration. While we're still working on the project conditions, there is one we would like to have addressed at tonight's hearing. The condition number six associated with the public art plan, and Andrew Nelson will speak to it. Beyond that, our team is happy to address questions the honorable body may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew Nelson here. Yep. Just real briefly, on page 1-27 of your package, we have the project conditions of approval. And these work for us. We thank the staff for clarifying and helping us understand these. Condition number six, with regard to a public arts plan. We're very excited about the potential for a statement art piece here and would just ask the commission's consideration to change the timing on our submission of a public art plan from having to have it ready at the time we pull our building permits to instead having it ready by the time we do our certificate of occupancy. We redo did the Shepherd Ferry Costa Mesa mural, the big one you see from the freeway. And our experience when asking artists to to do that very large piece of art was that they could really visualize what to what to propose. Once they saw the building up and framed, we had a lot better response. So if the commission would be open to that change, that would, I think, help us get a better piece of art here. But with that, that's the only comment on the conditions. Thank you. And I think we're open for questions.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Hi, yes, I do have a couple items. Like to compliment the applicant on a really nice project. I think it addresses all the important architectural features that the city put before in terms of activities and uses. Two things that I think I've already mentioned one of them. I'd like to see more space for, I think, creating activity along the street is so important to the downtown area. And I think we need space for that to happen. I see a lot of restaurants struggling with their, you know, wishing they had, especially right now, more outdoor dining space. But I think as a matter of practice, that's something that's really important, especially in our environment. So I would like to see a few more feet out front of that retail area so the potential for a restaurant, if it goes in there, they could have some outdoor seating. The other item, the parking structure on along Fifth Street, we have some residential uses across the street. And in terms of architectural treatment of the parking garage, I I think I'd like to see more happening there in terms of creating more scaled down appearance for the for the use across the street. I don't know what that is. If it's taking the green, I don't know if that's a green screen you have planned there or just a hedge. It looks like it's a it's just called out as a landscape buffer on the elevation I'm looking at. But with a green screen that went up a couple of stories to the parking structure or created some sort of plaster treatment along there on lower couple floors. I think that would help greatly. Right now, it's called out as painted concrete. So it's one, two, three, and four, five levels of parking structure based on the residences there. So those are my few comments overall. I think a really nice project. Love the mural and architecture, the Monterey style. I think it's great.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen. No comment. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Rivera. No comment. Thank you. Commissioner Fan.
Hi. I'd love to echo what Commissioner Morrissey said. I do think this is a great project to help transition from downtown space into kind of more the single family, while still utilizing, you know, the mixed-use model. I do understand that there are some finite issues, but for clarification, on Fifth Street, on Lot B, I it seems that we have enough landscaping there based on what I reviewed, right? Was the front edge issue more on Fourth Street and Mortimer?
Sorry, Commissioner, who was that question directed to?
Oh, sorry. Whether the applicant or staff. All right. I thought it should have been staff.
One more time. I didn't quite hear you.
For staff, with the applicant, I guess my my main concern is to the opposite direction. It's, you know, you have a lot of single-family residential. And I just want to make sure that whatever landscaping we have, that is, you know, adequate and far back. Just because I understand we have some lot-like issues because the lot is a little smaller than usual.
Oh, I see. I understand your question. The site configuration isn't affected on Fifth Street for either site. The applicant is providing more than what the required setback would be for that landscape area. And we can talk about this now or later. But as a matter of kind of clarification, we did speak to the applicant about the concern of the visibility of the parking structure that you and Commissioner Morrissey shared. And we did, as part of the site plan review, request that a minimum 36-inch box trees be placed on there versus our normal required 24-inch box trees. This would allow kind of more mature trees to be more mature trees to be placed in that area. What we could also consider, if the commission desires, is staff adding it maybe additional language as part of that to maybe include minimum trunk height requirements or any sort of mesh trellises requirements. That would help kind of screen the parking structure. Ideally, the the plan as part of the site plan review is to ensure that there would be mature trees in place during installation so we wouldn't have to wait for a growth period of maybe five to 10 years before there is a screen.
And the trees are great. You know, I think there are a lot of there's a lot of flexibility in ensuring that our structures look nice and are attractive. You have to look at them all the time. You know, you can find some decorative art or art, you know, some type of mural-like thing. I think there's ways that we can address that rendition to the trees to make it more appealing to residents who have to see it all day. I just very much hope that it doesn't just stay gray concrete. Because even with the trees, I don't think it'll make enough of a difference when you have, you know, four or five-story parking or, yes, three or four-story parking structure. So that's one thing. I'm definitely open to that changing that condition to, after pulling the building permits, definitely as an artist, you want to see what you're working with. And it is, it can be difficult to envision that piece if the building is not there. But if that's the case, I would like to condition on, you know, having some type of deadline where the art is commissioned and completed so that it doesn't sit empty for, you know, two years or so after the building is completed. Is that something that the applicant would be amenable to?
I will speak on that. Yes, that's exactly our experience in Costa Mesa and what we would do here. You get a building up, you give the artist a finished surface, they can envision, and probably much of it goes on while you're completing the paint and the rest of the job. So certainly within six months to a year of CFO, that artwork can be complete.
Great. And for the applicant, I know last time I did string up potentially having a mural of some sort also on Building B because the style of these are, at least in the renderings, are pretty light, where it doesn't have that same kind of color or it's just a blank corner. So it would be great if we can get either some art or something there too to just kind of tie it into the entire development.
Thank you. I'll just say we welcome that comment. The the art locations are 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 conceptual. And the the art plan that we'll go through with the city, we we want to put the art in tasteful places, and that's a good good comment. So great.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I can have. Oh.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, so last time during the study session, I understand that Commissioner Garcia this time brought up the fact that here it doesn't trigger newly amended who the commissioner general has been updating, but there was some conversation that that there is potentially unaffordable housing development that is being discussed. I understand that a couple of years ago, when this project came off at Sunshine Meeting, a lot of residents had concerns regarding that issue. You know, are you able to disclose what's going on there in terms of size or anything like that?
So Carl, would you mind maybe chiming in right there?
Hi, this is Carl Middleton. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for asking that question. I think it's important to know that the Gonzalez family is really dedicated to that mission of providing affordable housing in the city of Santa Ana. And we're in detailed discussions with our proposed project partners, C and S Development, on a site that is less than a mile away. And we would anticipate in that that location to have a completely affordable project with approximately 40 units or more. So we're we're, while it's not required, a project, we see it as a long-term investment in the city of Santa Ana that we want to continue. And I think that we've been very fortunate to have great support by our residents in the Santa Ana and our workforce. So it's something that we want to do as as part of our commitment to the city.
Great. And may I ask where in the planning package are you?
Right now, we're in, we have, we've submitted a conceptual design, and we're working to get approval of the deal structure. So hopefully, we'll be there within the next 60 to 90 days.
That's wonderful. I really appreciate that. And I grew up in the Mexican Northgate district, and they've been wonderful community members. So I do commend applicant for for that commitment. Other question is, I understand that place in neighborhood very much ties on the market for fresh produce. You know, it's really, I think the community, right? People work here, they go there. It's it's something that they're really into. There's going to be a new Northgate market. Will you remind me where that is or how far away that will be from here?
Well, I I don't have the opportunity to give you a specific location because that's still in negotiation. But we're highly confident that we'll have that one confirmed, and it will be less than a mile away. And during during that timeframe, we're also committed to make sure that we address the needs of our current customers through transportation and other options through other store, other five stores in the city of Santa Ana because they're great customers, and we certainly don't want to inconvenience them any more than is necessary. And we want to, in long-term customers, because they've been such great supporters of our market these past almost 30 years in the city of Santa Ana.
Well, that's really great. I understand that either employees will be transferred to other stores, and I think having not leaving any conditions, especially during the pandemic.
We commit that one of the employees will lose their jobs because of this. We've got great employees, our associates, our team members, and we want to keep them working for Northgate as as long as they would like to be in our in our company. So their their jobs are not at risk at all.
Awesome. And just for clarification, you said that you're looking to transportation auctions for customers? Or what what do you mean by that exactly?
Well, you know, we currently offer offer lift rides from our our stores back to the customers' homes. And that's the program that we've had for for several years now that's been very effective. Depending on how how that opportunity exists, there's also opportunities to to bring back our shuttle vans and to really give people the transportation rides that they need, especially since the store is going to be relocated, and they're going to be without. uh, especially since the store is going to be, be relocated and they're going to be without, uh, that store for, you know, for several years. Uh, we have a store down on Main Street. We've got a store, uh, up on Seventeenth Street. Uh, and they're less convenient, but we'll make sure that, uh, we have a concerted plan that gets them to the store and gets them, uh, back to their home, uh, you know, to, to keep this, um, option, you know, to keep them shopping at our stores. Customers are hard to find and we sure don't want to lose them.
Yeah, brand loyalty is definitely a thing. Um, and one last question, obviously, that the developments, uh, both the lots A and B have quite a bit of, uh, you know, back, back to space, at least some roof deck or some type of, um, outdoor space there too. Will that be uh, available to, um, you know, the public or is it residence only?
That's residence only. They're, uh, of course they're guests. We've looked at other options and they just weren't practical in this location.
Understood. Thank you so much. Uh, that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Yes, thank you. First of all, Northgate, thank you so much for restating the commitments you had made prior, uh, when we had had the work-study session. We really appreciate your presence. We always have been partnered up in the community for a long time, especially the shuttles for our abuelitos that you've helped during COVID and prior. So thanks for that. Uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
A motion? We're, we're in public, uh, we're in public comments right now.
Okay.
So, I mean, we, we still are, we are still in the public hearing.
Okay, then I'll wait.
Okay, all right. Um, do you have any other, do you have any other comments or questions that you'd like to put forth today with the applicant?
No, they've answered them prior and again today. Very well, thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, at this point in time, uh, I don't have any questions of the applicant myself. I think that each and every one of the commissioners have highlighted a number of areas and, uh, uh, I think the answers have been very satisfactory. So what I'd like to do at this point in time is, um, open the hearing to, uh, anyone that was, anyone that's calling in. Madam Secretary, uh, is there anybody that would like to speak on this matter?
Uh, yes, Chair, we do have some callers in the queue that would like to comment. Callers, uh, if you would like to speak on this matter, please dial star nine now. I will call on you by the last three numbers of your phone number. And I will start with caller with the last three numbers nine nine four. Please dial star six to unmute yourself and then state your name, your comment, and your position. You will have three minutes. Go ahead.
This is Dave Elliott, President and CEO of Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce. Uh, this is in support of this project. Uh, we look at this, we had a presentation, uh, several months ago in our Government Affairs Council, well-received by our council in support of this project. Uh, just a couple of quick notes. Uh, I think, uh, first of all, they have an outstanding project sponsor in Northgate that has had a long-time, long-term presence in our city, a big supporter of, of our, of our residents as well as our businesses. So I'm excited to, to, to see a sponsor like Northgate step, uh, step up here, uh, and work on this project, uh, with, uh, the other developers as well. We look at this as also from an economic, uh, development perspective in that, uh, places for, uh, new residents, new people to come in and live in our, in our great city as well as jobs, uh, that be provided and, uh, be available to, uh, our residents and people in our immediate area. So, uh, on behalf of the chamber, we're, uh, excited to, to promote and to, uh, uh, support this project. Um, and we look forward to this, uh, happening sooner than later, as we would say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, next call, next caller with the last three numbers four zero four. Please dial star six to unmute yourself, then state your name, your position on the matter and your comment. You will have three minutes. Go ahead. Caller with the last three numbers four zero four.
Hi, this is Ryan Chase calling in. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Ryan, yeah, we can hear you. Great, great. Thank you, thank you very much. Um, this is, like I said, this is Ryan Chase calling. I'm a fourth generation, uh, business and property owner in the downtown. My family's here since nineteen nineteen. I'm calling to support the project. I think it'll heavily benefit the downtown and the started businesses and create new, welcoming entry in the downtown and, uh, create a high-quality project, a new streetcar project. Um, I think also the fact that offering multiple options of, you know, single studios, the four bedrooms is a great addition to the area and much needed. Um, I, I couldn't speak more highly about Northgate, the Northgate Pick-up and Northgate Market, uh, business. Uh, they're heavily involved in the community, uh, their actions speak for themselves. And, um, I couldn't, I couldn't be, uh, more excited about the project and, and the family behind it. I also want to add that the center will not displace anyone and the current store and employees move nearby for a better site to accommodate a, a larger site and, and better access. Um, again, I support the project. I think it'd be great downtown. And again, couldn't think of a better family behind the project. So, uh, uh, support and approve this project. And let's, like, like Dave said, let's get a shovel and grab, let's move in as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Caller with the last three numbers one four eight. Please dial star six to unmute yourself, state your name, your comment, and your position. You'll have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Hello, this is Richard Drury. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes. Uh, my name is Richard Drury with the law firm Lozo Drury and I, um, representing the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Rights. I submitted a, um, fifteen-page comment letter today at four thirty with about two hundred and fifty pages of expert analysis. I just wanted to confirm that that was received um, and in the record. Um, our position is that the project should not be approved unless there's proper sequel review conducted. The, uh, staff is relying on the Transit Zoning Code, EIR, prepared a decade ago in twenty-ten. That's improper because the TZCD EIR was a program EIR, not a project-specific EIR. It analyzed the one hundred block area of the city. Um, this is a two-block project and it didn't do any project-specific analysis. So the, the staff's analysis, uh, is proceeding under Sequel Guidelines Section one five one six two, uh, which concerns supplemental EIRs and addenda. However, the Transit Zoning Code EIR was prepared under Sequel Guidelines Section one five one five two, which is an entirely different section that concerns programmatic EIRs. And that's not my opinion. That's what the Transit Zoning Code EIR states, um, in, in the EIR itself. It says that it's a program EIR under one five one five two. That means that a project-specific EIR is required for this project to analyze its in, impact and to mitigate those impacts. We've submitted along with our letter, um, expert opinions from air quality experts who conclude that the project as proposed will have significant indoor and outdoor air quality impact. In addition, it will have significant historic impact. And it fails to comply with the city's density and massing requirements. Uh, in particular, uh, it requires an amendment to Municipal Code Section four one dash two oh two three to allow greater density and massing on the third to the fifth stories. And it also exceeds the density of fifty dwelling units, uh, per acre that's allowed under the general plan. Um, and it does require a general plan amendment, uh, to go from urban neighborhood two to urban core. That triggers the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. And so the project should be required also to, to include affordable housing. Uh, right now, it's a fully market rate, rate project. Um, the general plan amendment, uh, is necessary because the general plan only allows fifty units per acre and this project is fifty-four unit. That's exactly the type of amendment that
Caller, three minutes has passed.
Affordable housing requirements. Um, thank you, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, uh, Richard. We appreciate that. Um, next.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, caller with the last three numbers four three three, please dial star six to unmute yourself, state your name, your position on the matter and your comment. You have three minutes. Go ahead. Caller with the last three numbers of four three three. Please dial star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you now.
Hello? Call of four three three there.
Chair, it looks like she muted herself again. I will go to the next caller and then we'll come back to her. Is this, oh, I, I'm, I apologize. That was the last caller. Uh, I will call on her. Again, caller with the last three numbers of four three three, please dial star six to unmute yourself. Okay, Chair, let's, um, come back to her. We did have one more person raise their hand, um, to speak. Caller with the last three numbers of four nine seven. Please dial star six to unmute yourself, state your name, your position, and your comment. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Laura and I'm a Lacy neighborhood resident. My family and I have lived in Santa Ana for four generations. I myself have lived in this neighborhood my entire life and I strongly oppose the fourth and Mortimer mixed-use development. This project will only create more density in Santa Ana, which we already have a problem with. It will compromise our quality of life for every Santa Ana resident. We already have problems with air quality emissions, traffic, noise pollution. Not convention in our neighborhood, we have a major parking problem. Furthermore, we already have a second condominium across the street from Northgate, which is four floors and two hundred units. Please stop the density in, in Santa Ana. To the planning commission, please be responsible and stop the density in Santa Ana. Thank you. That will be all.
Thank, thank you, Laura.
Chair, and if we, um, may, we'll try a four three three just one last time. Caller with the last three numbers four three three. Please state your name and your comment. Go ahead. Okay, uh, we're not getting a response from her. We do have one other person who's, would like to speak. Caller with the last three numbers six zero two, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your comment, and your position. You have three minutes.
Hello? Hello?
Hi.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Andre Roberson. I'm with the Power One Foundation and I am for the project. Um, I am a partner of Northgate Market and the family and I speak from the side of community. I was born and raised in Santa Ana, uh, right near the location of the proposed project. And I really think that with their response to the community and being community-involved and driven, that this would be a positive project to move forward. Um, I know there's always different decisions and different changes that would need to be made as forest buildings and different things. But I think of the core of the project and what Northgate Market is looking to do for the community of Santa Ana and what they've proven over the years. And even in their response to the COVID-nineteen crisis and how they jumped into the community and me being a partner, being in the community, feeding the community of Santa Ana, um, for over fifteen years now, born and raised, have a family business that's four generations and, um, it's very hard to come by, um, families like the Gonzalez family that are really ingrained and rooted into the community and look for the betterment of the community. And I think it's very important, the fact that they're building this and also building a new store, but no one will lose jobs when there's a lot of people that have lost jobs. So I think they care about the person that lives in the community that they're looking to build up and help during for the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew.
Chair, we're going to give that caller one last shot. She does have her hand raised.
Give it a shot.
All right, caller four three three, please state your name and your comment. Go ahead. Dial star six to unmute yourself, caller four three three.
Hello?
Yes, yes, thank you. We have you on.
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
Can you identify, can you identify who you are? Hello?
Uh, Chair, she has muted herself again.
Okay, well, then at this point in time, we'll move on.
Okay.
Um, so.
Then we, let's see here. Yes, we, we do not have any other callers. I'll just do one final call. Uh, if you'd like to speak, please dial star nine. Wait a couple of seconds. Okay, caller with the last three numbers of four three three, please state your name and your comment. Dial star six to unmute yourself. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we have you on.
Hello?
We hear you.
Okay, I think, uh, we're having technical difficulties with this phone number, so we will conclude the public comments. There are no other callers, Chair.
Okay, well, at this point in time, I just want, all right, that's fine. We'll, we'll conclude the public comments as soon as we, uh, if the applicant wants to say anything else with respect to the public comments, uh, or anything else that they would like to say at this point in time.
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so no further comments from the applicant at this time, then, then we will at this point close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, make your motion.
So I would like to make the motion, you can see how, to what this is, all the different amendments. Um, trying to reopen my computer, sorry. All right, here we go. All right, I'd like to make the motion to, uh, this forward environmental review, number two thousand eighteen dash thirteen, site plan review, number twenty twenty dash zero three, variance number twenty twenty dash zero six, and amendment application number twenty twenty dash zero four to allow construction of a new mixed-use development at four oh nine and five oh nine East Fourth Street with also the change to the, when the art would be ready.
Okay.
Could we change that language?
Do we have a second to Contras, uh, Vice Chair Contras Leo's motion?
A second, this is Ty.
Ty, you, okay. Um, good. And then, um, is there any comments that anybody has at this point in time? Uh, Commissioner Garcia, do you have any comments?
Uh, I would just add that, uh, perhaps a friendly amendment to support, uh, Commissioner Morrissey's point about the, uh, providing some space for outdoor seating. I think that's really important. I think things will change going forward, uh, post-COVID and, and ways that, um, will require that. And uh, it would be a good opportunity to address that now.
Okay.
That would be the only thing I would add. Thank you.
So Commissioner, uh, Contras Leo, uh, will you accept this friendly amendment?
Absolutely. And I, I don't know if we can also include something where they wouldn't have to come back. I know because of COVID, we're seeing this has come up, but if this is something that they can, uh, create some language for, that, that they wouldn't have to come back again to revisit this, that this would just allow them to be able to use a space outside on the sidewalk.
Or, or a space, I guess it's not just sidewalk space. I think it's also the question of whether or not it can be bumped out onto the street like we've done in a number of other restaurants downtown too.
Yeah, I thought, I don't know what else it entails for us to have to, to propose at this time, but, but yes, I am open to it.
Okay.
Yeah. Should I bump that? Nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey? Okay, Commissioner Morrissey.
Yes, thank you. I have, um, a question. Uh, can we, have we received input from the attorney on, if this does require in fact this, uh, project specific, uh, report now?
Hi, this is Lisa. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, we are, we are confident with our secret consultants that, um, there was no subsequent sequels analysis that was required other than the addendum that was prepared. There were no substantial changes that required anything further.
So is, are you saying that the, the comment by, um, legal, the legal individual, uh, just before this, it would be Richard Drury?
Mr. Drury?
Yes, I mean, the document he said that they submitted at 4:30, which was 200-plus pages.
We, we were not able to review and, and, and respond adequately to that, but we are confident with our secret consultants and that you'd like to consult them further, but we are, we are comfortable with our findings.
Okay, Tom?
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, for the record, we have checked in on that. Um, I appreciate further amendment. Uh, I'm not, is staff going to draft language on that or, um, how's that?
Thank you, Commissioner.
As far as the outdoor dining?
Yes.
Um, there is a, there is an application that the, uh, different businesses go through with public work. So I'm not quite sure what you want us to add as a condition, to be honest.
Commissioner, Commissioner Chairman, so, pardon me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, uh, you're saying that we don't have to add in special language for this? Because it's already an opportunity for the applicant. They just need to fill out the appropriate paperwork and that's correct. There's a process, that, right there is a process that the restaurants go through with public works for an outdoor dining application and permit. Um, I don't know if you're asking for them to provide more space so that they still adequate sidewalk space? Or, I, I'm just unclear. I just need direction.
Well, I think we just wanted to be sure that they have the opportunity to be able to have outdoor dining if that was the case. But if there's a process already, we would hope and encourage the applicant. And we don't know if they've already been approached about, um, to take advantage of that so that they can be assured that they need to use that space they can.
That's correct. There is a process in place and they would apply once there were, um, restaurants or businesses in place in that level that wanted to have the outdoor dining. Can we ask that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can we ask the applicant if that's something they've done or is they're interested in?
Of course.
Go ahead. Uh, can you hear me? I'd like to respond. Andrew Nelson here. Uh, we are delighted to consider the prospect of sidewalk dining and going through that, uh, standard process of public works. That would be our idea. That's why we showed you a streetscape that has active, uh, space on the sidewalk. Look forward to working through that with the public works.
Great, and this is, this is fun, Garcia. I just want to add a little bit to that right there. And that is that, one of the things that we recognize with this COVID-19 pandemic, uh, that is that a lot of our tenants are experiencing exactly the same, uh, situation when it comes to, uh, indoor, outdoor dining. And we have actually worked very diligently and hard, uh, on their behalf, go ahead and provide them with, uh, anything they need to be able to, uh, succeed. Uh, and we'd be more than willing to go ahead and, and move forward with that particular application.
Great. I think the commission's intent was to see you succeed as well, so I think we're all on the same page. Happy to hear you're, you're moving forward with that.
Okay.
You said that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, um, so, um, Commissioner, Commissioner Morrissey.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I'm not sure what, you know, I, I would like to move forward with this project. But, uh, can the applicant comment on any, any willingness to, um, uh, perhaps provide a green screen or some way of scaling down the, um, park construction on Fifth Street?
If I may.
That's something I can do. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Nelson here. Um, so the, the project is stepping down from seven stories that's full and French to five stories as you move up French and then to those parking structures that, uh, that, that attempt to protect those, uh, more sensitive neighborhoods on the opposite side of Fifth Street. Uh, the, the most sensitive edge is the, is the side east of Minter, where you have, uh, two-story homes backed by, uh, by the higher, or taller buildings. So that, uh, that edge is where the parking structure drops to three stories. And, uh, that's by design to try to, you know, be sensitive to context. Um, we have the additional five feet setback on the, uh, second block, which is, uh, five more than required under, uh, this part of the code, but happy to do it to make the two garages, uh, setback equally. And, um, we're also gonna go, uh, I think Pedro mentioned, from the 24-inch box tree to the 36. So, you know, you, you put structures, structural, you know, stuff on a garage, it, it has a lifespan and looks a certain way, but landscaping can, can always look good. So that, that's our, our first move. Uh, we have some ideas on paint and possibly, uh, incorporating arches elements on that side. But, but really, our, our, our effort here is to let the building stand for itself and try to shield and screen with, uh, a great pedestrian experience with the landscape advantage.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey, any further questions?
Um, no, no, no further questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen. No question, thank you. Commissioner Rivera. No questions, thank you. Commissioner Fan.
Hi, this is for the applicant or staff to make some clarification for me. Um, uh, because the other commissioners are mentioning the outdoor seating. And I do understand we have a, an applicant, an application process and I really appreciate the applicant taking into account. However, based on the run rate, it's, but the type of outdoor seating would be quite limited to, um, kind of what Chapter One has right now, which is intended tables two, you know, maybe three or four. Um, and it will not be like something, patio similar to Congress Hill House or the den down there. And I just want to verify that that will be the key, right? Because of the, the way that the building goes up to the streets, the front door.
Hi, this is Carl Middleton. You know, the intent here would be to, uh, utilize our great weather as much as possible. And the idea of having outdoor dining is something that we really support. The, uh, you know, Californians are, are very climate sensitive, so a couple degrees difference, uh, gets people inside, uh, pretty quickly. So, so we like the idea of the accordion-style doors. We can open up the restaurant to the, uh, weather when, when the weather's ideal and, and when it's not, uh, we can close them and, and perhaps have less, uh, seating outside. But, uh, it's, uh, the idea is to, uh, I think we're in concert with you on the idea of activating the street, providing for outside dining. But we don't have all the details yet. I can't commit to you that we will work with staff to come up with a plan that meets your intent though.
Oh, that's great. I mean, I, I'm, you know, COVID, right now, we can't really base on what's happening right now and ask, you know, and basically be the same in fifteen years. But I agree that there will be some changes. I like the idea of, for the California room, or as you said, an accordion door. Um, I, I just don't want us to be given the impression that, you know, with the amount of sidewalk space that is available, that there will be some type of patio outdoor dining. Say that some people can rent out for a party when it's, you know, it might not accommodate forty people or thirty people. Um, so I just wanted some clarification on that, but it seems, you know, not really gonna get an answer to that until, um, I guess the project moves forward. Um, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, um, first of all, I guess, first of all, I'd like to just, uh, again, I think everybody else has basically said it. Uh, but thank, uh, Northgate for taking on this project and, uh, taking on the development of this area. Uh, and, and to, uh, help, uh, improve, shall we say, its presence in, in downtown Santa Ana, help downtown Santa Ana area. Um, I think, uh, most people are pretty much in favor of this at this point in time. Uh, I would like to, uh, go back to one, one comment that was made by Richard Drury. And that is that he made the comment about the fact that the, um, units, that we actually were fifty-four units per, um, dwelling units versus fifty, which would trigger the who. And I guess, how come we have a difference in opinion on that one at this point in time? I think that's probably a question for Min.
It's a chair, so wouldn't be worth it to, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a difference of opinion. The, actually, question is in the general plan and the general plan is not being changed for the property.
Okay, did I miss something? Is, is the general plan, the current general plan and the new general plan, are they basically, there was a trigger toward, that there was a trigger on the number of dwelling units per acre? My understanding was fifty was the, was the, uh, top, was the limit?
The general plan or the existing property is not being changed and it will continue to stay the same as the new general plan as well. That is not being changed.
Is being changed.
Correct.
Thanks.
What is being changed is the zoning of one of the properties, which is partially.
Okay, but let me just, I, I guess, I'm trying to go through this question and see where I'm missing something here. Is there a trigger for the who with respect to the number of dwelling units per acre? I didn't hear you. No, answer's no. So there's no trigger for, so it's, so if it turns out to be sixty dwelling units per, per acre, that's fine, that, that doesn't take any consideration the trigger for the who? What triggers the who then?
The general plan provides for the transit zoning code and what's designated for the entire area.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Hi.
Yeah, I'm going to figure out. Let me, this part, I a little bit more. Where the confusion lies is the transit zoning code is a form-based code that's more intended to address the form, the shapes of the building. That density range is just an average estimated density based upon the type of product they're building. They're building a land block project, which means based upon our best estimate, when we put this code together, we were looking at about forty to fifty units per acre. It was never a locked-in type of density. Um, if they can design a project to meet that, those standards, they can put as many units as they want on there. It was just a rough range based upon our best guess, okay, of that type of product, density for that type of product. So like Min mentioned, there's no general plan amendment at all on this project here. It's just a, a code amendment to change the project from the UN2 to the urban center. It's a zoning code change. Which does not trigger the who. Okay? All right, and, um, I guess that's, that's probably the last question that I have at this point in time. Again, um, you know, this looks like a very good project to get things back online. And as everybody, I think, mentioned, the people that are looking at economic development, I too am involved with the economic development of, of the city. It's, it's one of those things that, uh, the sooner we can get online and get things going, the better off we are. Uh, there will be some density changes for sure. Um, but I think that's all part of the urban fabric that we have at this point in time. So I will go through and ask the commissioners if there's any last questions that they may have and then we'll go roll call vote. Commissioner Garcia, any last questions? Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morrissey? Uh, no further questions. Commissioner Nguyen? No question, thank you. Commissioner Rivera? Sorry, no question. Commissioner Fan?
No question.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No more questions, thank you.
Okay, I have no further questions at this point in time. Um, Madam Secretary, will you do a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, roll call vote. I have a motion by Contreras Leo, seconded by Fan.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I will continue with, I will continue with the roll call vote. Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Um, motion passes by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, uh, Northgate. We appreciate you joining us this evening and, uh, good luck with your venture. It looks like a great project. With that, um, we will go back to, just for the sake of discussion, we do not have to do excuse actions since we have a full, full commission at this point in time. So this concludes the business calendar items. And we'll be moving on to the work-study session. And now is the time to review and discuss the proposed development project located at 1801 East Fourth Street. Please note, no action will be taken on this item. Selena, you will be presenting to us this evening.
My chair, this is Commissioner Fan. I have a disclosure to make.
Go ahead.
All right. Okay, so I have to, I have to keep myself from this project as my employer, Lieutenant Pepper, has represented the developer for over thirty years. Uh, prior to my starting work there, and so I will now meet myself and introduce myself in the room. Someone please let me know when they come back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Fan. All right, uh, Selena, are you ready?
Yes, good evening, uh, Commission. This is Selena Kellher, Associate Planner. And tonight's work-study session is for the Central Point and Mixed Use Development Project. Uh, next site, please. This project is located at 1801 East Fourth Street. And the project site is one of the few remaining vacant, uh, undeveloped parcels in the city. The project is an eight-acre site, uh, immediately adjacent to the I-5 freeway and just north of Fourth Street. The general plan designation for the project site is district center and the zoning is professional administrative office with the Metro East Mixed Use overlay. The surrounding uses to the north, south, and east are office buildings and the project is located in the active urban district. This district is intended to be the most intense level of development within the Metro East area with development, development opportunity. with development, development opportunities for office, residential, commercial, and hotel uses. In addition, the overlay, uh, designate Cabrio, that Cabrio Park Drive should incorporate pedestrian-oriented design. Next slide please. Um, so here, next you'll see the site photos as a site, a vacant, largely vacant site. Um, the top photo is the view from the north of the office building, um, in the distance, two story office buildings. And the lower picture, a view looking from the Cabrio Park Drive and Parkport, looking south where you can see the Kaufman's Building in the distance. Next slide please. Sorry, I think there's a bit of delay on my end. Okay, there we go. So, uh, here you can see the project, uh, project, which includes a total of six hundred and forty-four residential units and approximately fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space. This is broken down into two buildings. Building A is the building that's located at the corner of Fourth Street and Cabrio Park. So larger building, it has three hundred and twenty-five residential units and the bulk of the commercial, which is nine thousand square feet of commercial space. Uh, Building B is the building closer to the freeway, it has three hundred and nineteen units and five thousand square feet of commercial space that will line Fourth Street. Um, each building has a centrally located parking structure with two parking spaces per unit. And then there's additional eighteen surface-level parking spaces along Fourth Street. The project includes, uh, residential amenities that are typical of, uh, mixed-use and the Putnis project. And has open space areas as the Great Lawn, Linear Park, and Dog Park, which I'll go over, um, in the site plan. Next slide please. Um, I just wanna go over the building heights of the buildings that go along with the, um, the rendering. So it's a five-story residential project wrapped around, uh, the seven-level parking structure above grade and one level of subterranean parking with a rooftop amenity deck. Um, here on the screen, you'll see the development standards of the active urban district within Metro East. These, uh, development standards specify the land uses, so mixed-use project, which this project includes the mix of commercial and residential units. Um, maximum number of stories, minimum site size, uh, publicly accessible open space, private and common open space, setbacks, and parking. And the project, um, meets these standards or exceeds them with parking at a ratio of two point oh of these spaces per unit. Next slide please. So this will be an overview of the site plan. Here we go. Um, vehicular access to the project will be provided from Parkport Place, which is to the north, and Fourth Street to the south. Um, the Great Lawn will be in the center of the development, which links the two buildings together and prevents direct cut-through traffic. There is a linear park on the east, on the, uh, west side of the del, development, adjacent to the freeway. Um, this will be programmed as a walking trail with landscaping, lighting, and seating areas and provide as a link to, um, Amazer Park, uh, walking trail and park just to the north. Uh, the commercial space you'll see here is in an orange color. It lines Fourth Street, wraps into the interior of the project. It's provided in both buildings and it's the total of, uh, fifteen, approximately fifteen thousand square feet. It links to a, uh, public plaza, which is provided at the corner of Fourth Street and Cabrio Park. This will provide opportunities for outdoor dining and seating areas. And you can see that, um, there are nine courtyards that the residential units are centered around to provide ground-level, uh, open space accessible to the units along with, uh, rooftop decks. Next slide please. Um, this should be just a close-up view of the Great Lawn and the center of the development. And then one of the large rooftop decks. Uh, each building will have access, uh, will have a rooftop deck with a closet, a fitness room, pool, and spa. Uh, next slide please. Um, next would be the, uh, rendering of the project. Second, I'm still having a little bit of a delay, make sure. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Uh, renderings of the project, so two, two temporary designs, two separate buildings. Uh, this is the, this is a commercial area along Fourth Street. Uh, views of the Linear Park, now also views of the Great Lawn and courtyard. You can go ahead and, uh, look through those rendering images. Just refreshing here on my end, sorry. Uh, next slide? Next slide? Next slide? Okay, with wire entitlements. Um, so being that the project meets the development standards of the Metro East, the site plan review application through active betting overlay documents before the planning commission. Um, I also want to note that the, uh, project has also prepared a market and fiscal analysis, which supports the commercial component in the project, the human health risk assessment in regards to proximity to the freeway, the traffic impact analysis. And, uh, the project was also analyzed in the two thousand eight and two thousand eighteen, uh, Subsequent AIR, which was adopted for the overall, uh, Metro East, uh, mixed-use overlay document. And the next step for the project would then be, uh, taking this project before the planning commission for consideration on October twenty-sixth. Uh, that concludes the staff presentation. Uh, we're available for any questions. We also have the applicant and rescue associate team on the line for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Selena. Um, we'll start with Commissioner Garcia. Do you have any questions of staff?
I do, thank you. Uh, what is the breakdown of the, uh, units in terms of, um, how many bedrooms, studios, and that percentage breakdown?
Okay, thank you. Um, they're at about forty percent of primarily two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, um, of the overall development, and then the remainder would be studios and one-bedroom. So it's, um, fifty average square, uh, feet per, for the breakdown. The average unit size, um, so they have studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, and a total, an average of eight hundred and seventy square feet.
That's the average, eight hundred and seventy square feet?
Average, eight hundred and seventy square feet per unit.
Okay.
And it's the largest and the smallest, so you know the ranges?
Uh, yes, so the studios are, uh, approximately five hundred square feet, so five eighteen. And then the largest unit is a three-bedroom unit, it's, uh, one thousand three hundred and thirty nine square feet.
And any affordable housing, uh, provided in this project?
They're not proposing any onsite affordable housing either.
That's all.
Commissioner Garcia?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey?
Is Commissioner Morrissey on the line?
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, so I, just to tag onto that question, is there a requirement for this development or, um, affordable housing units? Or are they, um, offsetting that with the, the development fee?
Uh, thank you, Tasha. Um, there is no requirement to provide onsite affordable housing units. And they will not be paying a fee, that is not applicable to the project if they're not asking for zone change or, or, I'm sorry, a general plan amendment. Um, and they comply with the development standards of the Metro East. So, for example, if this was an R one zone, an R one, a single-family home, that's what they're doing. That's, it meets the code. Um, this one is mixed-use, they're providing mixed-use project, and it meets the code requirement. So there's no requirement or trigger for, uh, in, uh, in the fee or providing an open space.
Okay, thank you. Um, another kind of a general question with developments, like, like the Cite Identity developments. What, um, is the, uh, requirement for public open space? I saw we had statistics on, um, combination of, uh, publicly accessible open space and a private and common open space. Is there, I, you know, we, I see statistics on our, um, public parks and our shortage of park space. Um, is there, uh, when we're adding residences, residents to the city, is there a requirement for park space? Or is that, um, taken up in, inside the development in this case?
Uh, in the Metro East specifically, it does require that fifteen percent of the total site area be dedicated to publicly accessible open space. Those spaces that anyone can go and walk to and from. Um, so that's about fifty thousand square feet. Um, that is, uh, met through the Linear Park, which is approximately thirty thousand square feet, internal passages or walkways. Um, and then the, uh, plaza and, uh, at the corner of Fourth and Cabrio and, uh, Four Courts. So they meet that standard, um, in those areas there. And then in addition to that, they have their own, um, common area, open space areas, which is, uh, for the residents, which would be some of the courtyards and, uh, the larger rooftop decks and, uh, internal central parks. So they are, um, providing both publicly accessible open space for the code requirement and private and common open space for code requirement.
And, and you said it's fifty thousand square feet?
Yes, so the requirement's, uh, fifteen percent of the total site area is eight acres. Um, and so they are providing, um, uh, meeting the standard at, uh, fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty square feet of publicly accessible open space.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to include an exhibit of the open space, um, with the planning commission staff report and the, um, public hearing.
That would help. That would help.
Yeah, let's do that. I, I think the rooftop garden looks beautiful in the pool area, actually nice.
Okay, Tom, any other questions of, uh, Selena's staff?
Um, no, not at this time.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Nguyen? No question, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Rivera? No questions, thank you. Okay, um, Commissioner, um, well, Commissioner Fan has recused herself, so we have, uh, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Um, I have one question and, um, it has to do, and, and this may apply to the applicant, but, uh, I think the number that I heard stated earlier in your presentation is that there's like fifteen thousand square feet of retail, commercial?
Correct, uh, it's fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty square feet, commercial in, uh, within the two buildings.
And the, the amount of people that, that we have in this from a fully occupied situation would be approximately?
Maybe some quick math on this one? I don't have that quite. You think four?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, let me.
For Grosso here.
You figure, uh, you figure, uh, what's the mix of units, so you're looking at about a thousand, fifteen hundred people approximately in these, uh, two buildings? Fifteen hundred to a thousand people, okay. All right, well, taking that into consideration, I mean, I guess what, what would be a concern that I have at this point in time is that with fifteen, with just fifteen thousand square feet of retail, that doesn't, that doesn't leave a lot of, uh, opportunity for, you know, somewhat of a, uh, a, a small grocery or small, uh, conveni, store like a, you know, Trader Joe's or something of that nature in that particular facility. Therefore, what's gonna happen is that people will probably go through the Cabrillo neighborhood and you'll be, have, you have Superior Market and you also have Alderson's right there, but they'll be traveling through the Cabrillo area. Um, have we taken that into consideration? And what's the, what's the position from a, uh, the developer's point of view on that particular item? Maybe ask the question, will we wait until the developer comes, comes on? Or is that something you can answer, Selena?
Well, I think we can have the developers speak to that, you know, that they also have, have their economic consultant, uh, who prepared a report. They'll also probably speak to that item.
Okay, so we'll hold off until we get to the developer? That, is that, or do we have a discussion with the developer at this point in time?
Please go through all the commissioners' comments, and otherwise we could open that to the developer.
Okay, that's fine. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions at this kind of time, Mike?
Just a follow-up, Mark.
Go ahead, Garcia.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Uh, the, you mentioned that for the open space, it included the internal passages and walkways. Uh, those are not, um, are those strictly just in the public spaces as walkways? Or does it incorporate any of these residential walkways?
It, it would be along the internal drive aisle, um, from both the north and the south.
Can you point that out in the, can you, what slide that is?
I'm very visual. Yes, of course, um, if we could go to the site plan. And the only problem is we don't have a cursor to point to these items. Uh, so in between the two buildings, there's a drive aisle that directly bisects the site and then leads directly into the central park, it would be along both sides of those drive aisles. On both the south and then the, and then the.
It wouldn't include anything internal to Building A or Building B, is that correct?
Uh, correct, no, so nothing in the internal, uh, walkways or anything that you would need to go to a door to get to any of the residential units.
Uh, and the renderings, uh, from an aesthetic standpoint, that's exactly what this is proposed? Or do we expect any changes or revisions?
No, the renderings are, are what would be before the commission's public hearing, um, with the exception of any comments that the commission has to make for the project. But the materials and the design, uh, that, that was worked through with the applicant, they've, uh, provided some more enhanced materials, uh, treated the buildings with three sixty architecture so that the freeway side has, um, equal treatment of the rest of the building and has broken it down into, um, small masses so it doesn't look like, uh, so much of a, a large monolithic building, but smaller, uh, individual building to the aisle.
And, and the landscaping is, you know, we're not gonna get little baby contraves with, you know, those little twigs? These are the, this is the size of what we expected to be on day one?
Uh, yeah, the rendering is fairly accurate to the, um, landscape plan that is provided. And we can also, uh, we also condition the project with, uh, the ground chunk height of the trees to make sure that it's, um, adequate to what other projects in the area have, have self-insight. Or will be putting.
And I may have missed this one, and I apologize, but the seven, uh, story parking structure is going to be located in what area?
Sure, if, um, you could scroll through the, the image of the. Sure, if you could scroll through the image of the project description, I think that's the best view. It's a kind of an aerial view of the project. There's a seven-level parking structure for each building, and it's in the center of the development site and the center of each building. And the rooftop deck sits atop that seven-level structure. So from the street view, you'd mainly be seeing the residential units, the parking structure would be completely wrapped with residential units from offside.
And for market rental rates, are you assuming the applicant for that?
Yes, yeah, I believe they have that information available, ready in the global as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions of Selena and staff at this point in time? Okay, very none. What we'll do is we'll open up the discussion with the applicant at this point in time. So is there, is there, who is representing the developer at this point in time?
Just one second, Chair.
Hello?
Yeah, everyone. Applicant, if you'd like to speak?
The applicant will be?
Go ahead, Selena.
I was going to introduce him while, while you're getting him on the line, or I'm not sure if he's able to speak yet, but it's Sean Ross and with Waterford Group and Company. Sean, are you on the line? Or Deborah?
I don't have anyone with that information. If you'd like to speak up.
Applicant. The applicant is not available, is that what we're saying?
Applicant dial star nine to raise your hand. Okay, we have, we did find the applicant there on the different side, but, okay, please, applicant, go ahead and address the commission. And please dial star six to unmute yourself.
This is Sean Ross. And can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. I apologize, I was on the line. Good evening, Chair McLaughlin and Planning Commissioners. On behalf of Waterford Property Company and Arnel Affiliates, my name is Sean Ross and the co-founder of Waterford Property Company. I'm excited to present to you an iconic mixed-use project called Central Point. Central Point is a six-hundred-and-forty-four-unit half-day multifamily community with a focus on modernism and technology. The project is a contemporary design inspired by the highest quality projects in the country with a focus on architectural variety, sophisticated massing and articulation, active ground floor use, community connectivity, green principles, and active trails and open space. In addition to the project's high-end amenities and large roof decks, Central Point's central feature is its central park in the middle of the community and its walking trail on the project's western edge. Central Point will be a community where diversity, creativity, technology, and socializing will be encouraged. The project's target demographic will be young professionals, students, and empty nesters. And the object, the policy objectives of the project are to provide a catalyst project, provide high-end market rate housing for young professionals in the city of Santa Ana. The project will provide high-density housing for the city and help it, help meet its REA goals while also providing housing to the city and the county's largest employers. Central Point meets the goals of the city's general plan and Metro East overlay to reduce sprawl and increase transnational development. On the call, I also have our project architect, K T G Y, our project landscape architect, MJS Landscape, L L G, the traffic consultant in Fusco, our civil engineer. But before I jump into answering some of the questions that I heard from the commissioners' comments, I just wanted to take a minute to thank staff for their extremely detailed and well-thought analysis of the project. We've been working on this project in conjunction with staff for nearly two years now and really want to take time to thank them. With that said, I did want to answer a couple of the questions that came up that I heard in comments. First, I know there was a comment regarding retail space. As you heard, the supposed retail space for the project is just over fifteen thousand square feet. We did work closely with the Concord Group and A E Com to do fiscal analysis and retail demand analysis. Candidly, you know, the thought of having a Trader Joe's here would be great, and we actually know the Trader Joe's folks well, have discussed the site with them, and candidly, they passed. And really, the reason being is that the project will not emanate enough demand to support that. And we looked really closely at the project down the street, nineteen-oh-one, that Lion Living built with the first street, literally just to the south of the project. And at this moment in time, they still have available retail at that project. The last thing that we want to do is develop a project that has retail space that can't be leased. With regards to, and I think Vince mentioned, a thousand to fifteen hundred folks at forecast to live at the site, we ran our analysis, assuming two-point-three people per household times six forty-four, so right about fourteen hundred people would be living at the project. And when you look at that population size relative to the retail, we think it's, that it's appropriate. I know that there were some other questions regarding open space, landscape, and the parking structure. Like I mentioned, we do have our project team on the line, and, you know, I'm happy to open up the floor to questions, and I'm also happy to answer questions as well.
Okay, thank you, Sean. We'll start with Commissioner Garcia. Do you have any questions of Sean?
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Sean. Couple of questions. First, question on what your expected market rate for rental space in the range of the studio here through the bedroom?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as mentioned earlier in staff's presentation, the weighted average unit size for the project is eight hundred and sixty square feet. And the weighted average rental rate, we assume for the, for the site is two dollars and seventy-five cents a foot, which works out to, on a weighted average for the project, about twenty-four hundred dollars per unit when you weigh and average it across the entire project. Studios will be a little bit less than that, and three bedrooms will be a little bit more, but on a weighted average, twenty-four hundred dollars per unit is what we're assuming. And that's in line with what, you know, other projects, newly built projects are in the city.
And you mentioned the development down the street, and I think, is it where Hudson's is located? Is that the project you're referencing?
It's the nineteen-oh-one project that, yeah, that Lion Living built, and then I think they recently sold it. But yes, just down the street.
Okay. And you know what the residential occupancy rate is? Are they, you know, where you would expect to be in terms of occupancy?
I am not privy to the latest occupancy there. You know, it's not public record, but, you know, I would, I would venture to say that they were, they're probably ninety-four to ninety-five percent occupied.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for now.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey.
Yeah, thank you. I just have, I think, just one question about the architecture and wondering what types of materials you're planning on using. You mentioned some high-end type of first-class facility and housing, so I'm just wondering what types of materials we're talking, maybe on the exterior.
Yep. I'm going to have Keith Laydett, our project architect, who is on this call, answer that if you don't mind, Commissioner. Keith, can you answer that?
Keith? Keith, please dial star six to unmute yourself.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, to answer that question, it's really a combination of things. You know, we have several different materials that we're applying. Some of, I don't, you don't have one of the renderings up, but it's a combination of stucco, simulated wood siding, flat metal panels, frosted glass, railings, the lunam storefront, stone veneer at the base. There's quite a variety there, and not only, not only different materials, but different colors. And those materials, to really, as Selena said before, break down the larger-scale massing of this project into smaller pieces visually, so it, it doesn't appear to be as large as it is. And as she mentioned, we're applying that, those materials and colors and details equally around all sides of the project. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's a very attractive project. I think it blends well with the other work that's going on in the area. Just wanted to hear what was planned for the exterior.
Thank you, Tom. Commissioner Nguyen. No questions or comments next to it. Okay, Commissioner Rivera.
No questions either, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Let me, let me go back. I'm going to, I agree with what she made to comment, Sean, earlier about the, the fact that the retail in nineteen-oh-one has been very under, underoccupied. I think there's really only at this point in time a coffee shop on the corner that's, that's really up and running, and it's been there for a couple of years. But I think one of the other challenges that occurs is that there's really no parking that you can drive up to and use the retail, except for this small little area where two cars can fit at any given time. But given the retail that you have, is there going to be parking available for the retail in, in your facility? And if so, how much?
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in right now and answer that, or if you want to keep going with that question, I'll continue listening.
No, no, jump in, jump in. I mean, I'm.
Okay, okay. No, I appreciate that, and that's a, that's a, that's a great comment. And so, and candidly, that is something that we've spent a lot of time with our design team on. And I know that the site plan is not in front of you, but if you look at, and I don't know if it's possible to put the site plan back on the screen, but the main entrance to the site, to the project, comes in off Fourth, Fourth Street. And as you can see, on both sides of the, really that gateway, it's right there, of the project, we've got both Building A and Building B with, with retail at the hard corner of those buildings. And so, and there will be parking in front of that retail space. And then, as you're all aware, well aware, you know, Fourth Street, that is a busy street, and there is no place to do street parking out along Fourth Street, or candidly, along Cabrillo Park Drive. And so we've tried to maximize the site and, and the, and the parking in such a way that that will be active, usable, retail. And as you're aware, the Memu calls for the retail being on the exterior of the project. But candidly, that's challenging because you don't have streetfront parking. And so, so what we've done, and I've got Keith on the line, and he can speak to that as well, we've really, you know, thought long and hard about how we, we maximize usable retail space, and to your point, make it convenient for the consumer. Because the last thing you want to do is make them park and then walk and make it inconvenient. The parking structure will have some retail parking as well, but that all said, to park in that parking structure and then walk out to the hard corner of Fourth and Cabrillo, you know, will, will be a little bit of a walk. But Keith, you know, please jump in here and speak to that as well.
Yeah, Sean, it's like you're saying, the, there are convenient parking spaces located on the entry drive off of Fourth Street, down that center entry drive aisle, I believe, anything, it's like eighteen spaces, nineteen spaces. And then, the first floor in both buildings is open parking, where it could be a combination of retail parking and guest parking. And then, as you go up the ramp internally, it becomes gated and becomes all resident parking. So it's kind of first come, first served for those convenient spaces that are closest to the retail, retail fronting Fourth Street. And then there's more parking available inside the parking structure. The, this area of, in the Memu, doesn't require additional parking for retail space below a certain amount. It's, it's all lumped together as residential and retail parking.
Well, then what I'm kind of hearing and understanding in both of your comments is that you're probably destined to be another nineteen-oh-one with no retail spaces being filled, which doesn't make sense. So I guess I'm looking at the, the site plan and the conceptual landscape plan, and, you know, there is the entryway and exit off of the Fourth Street, off of Fourth Street itself, and there seems to be a number of cars parked inside that little area, that little entry area. Is that, if anything, is that going to be parking for, for retail? And if so, how many parking spaces are we talking about?
Yes, that's the, the parking I was describing. That's the most convenient there on that entry drive. I think it's eighteen or nineteen spaces there, closer to the retail. And then there's additional parking located on the ground floor of the parking structure just beyond that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that to be overutilized at this point in time, given the location of the parking. I mean, it's, I guess, I guess another way of looking at the retail is, you know, fifteen thousand square feet, how many, how many units, individual units are expected to be in that, in that, in that retail section?
I, I, I'm sorry, I missed that last, you said how many, how many units, or you mean how many?
Yeah, I mean, you, you got fifteen thousand, you got fifteen thousand square feet. And on this particular thing, you got a small, you have a portion of it in Building B and a portion of it in Building A. And essentially, my question is, is, is it fifteen spaces that are a thousand square feet each, or are they, you know, is there a range in there? I mean, it appears to me, the way it looks.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to speak to that, Commissioner. So we, we believe that the average retail units So we believe that the average retail unit size would be anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000 square feet. So you're looking, and candidly, if we can get a larger tenant, we would love for that. The space is designed in such a way that we could do, you know, up to 5,000 square feet, if possible. I do want to answer your question about demand. I've got Mike Reynolds from the Concord Group, who did a deep dive on the fiscal analysis and retail component of this project. So I'd be remiss not to let him speak, because he spent a lot of time studying the retail demand. So Mike, can you chime in here? *6.
Can you go down to see if we have a mic at the very bottom of this list here? Mike?
Is everyone, what does Mike need to hit to unmute himself?
Yes, so, Mike, please dial *6 to unmute yourself. But he is not over there, we already know. Mike, also, you can try dialing *9 if you happen to be on the attendee side. Okay, he is on the other side. We have two sections going on. So please, Mike, dial *6 to now unmute yourself, and you may begin speaking.
Hey, I'm unmuted. Sorry about that. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes.
Sorry. Yeah, relative to Sean's comments, I mean, we spent quite a bit of time, and pardon me, I'm Mike Reynolds. I'm the principal here at the Concord Group, based here in Orange County. And we've looked at a lot of kind of mixed-use projects throughout the county. And I think generally, we're always challenged in a mixed-use setting to provide significant scale of retail, primarily, you know, because of the lack of convenience as relates to kind of parking, right? And to the Commissioner's point around, you know, convenience and the number of spaces, that definitely dictates the amount of retail that's affordable on the site. And so I think, you know, if you look at the parking that's provided here, it's definitely commensurate to the scale of the retail, which is what, about 15,000 square feet? And I think the type of retail that you're going to get here is primarily convenience-oriented. It's going to be, you know, hairdressers, it's going to be dry cleaners. It's, you know, the retailers that provide those kind of basic services that the residents need, you know, on-site, that they can kind of use every day. And, you know, and that typical footprint for those types of retailers is anywhere from, like, say, 1,000 square feet to, let's say, a high of like 2,500 square feet. To Sean's point, if we could get, I mean, a bigger space to be occupied by a restaurant, right, and a restaurant space might be around 5,000 square feet, but that's more of a destination use, right? So that use is really predicated on the ability of people from the community being able to kind of use that retail. And so, it's going to be tough to get that type of retail tenant on-site. It's really those convenience retailers that are serving the community and those that are living within, let's say, like, walking distance or a short drive of the project. Does that answer your question?
And I'd like to, this is Sean's point, I'd like to just make one point in addition to what Mike said, is the, I heard you loud and clear, Commissioner, where you said that the design really kind of dictated the retail. I want to speak to that real quick as well. So as part of our market analysis, and candidly, as part of the city's market analysis, they did a third-party review. Prior to us even jumping into the retail demand, we did a very thorough highest-in-best use analysis for the site as well. And what I'll tell you is that in this area of the city, retail is challenging. And really, the reason being is because you need more rooftops in that Metro East overlay to really dictate higher demand. So to just say that you're going to design a project that is all retail, you still have to have retail demand. And as we've seen, especially now, living in the COVID era, you know, retail, as we've all seen, has been the hardest-hit asset class, in addition to hotels, in the COVID era. And, you know, there's Wall Street studies and Bloomberg analysis saying that our country's over-retail by almost 40%. But really, coming back to this site specifically, we did a highest-in-best use study. And the highest-in-best use study for the site is residential. And so what we designed was a project that was in conformance with all the design guidelines of the Metro East overlay. And then, really, from there, from the design principle, was to design the retail in such a way that it enhanced the project with an amenity to the project, but candidly, not a detriment to the project, where you over-retail it. And then, it, you know, it becomes, candidly, you know, a part of the project that's not, that doesn't enhance the rest of the community. So there's a subtle balance there, but we really tried to focus on that.
I mean, the other concern that I've got is that, you know, in the immediate area, whether it be Fourth Street or Tustin Avenue, there's a lot of these small storefront-type buildings. And notoriously, they've been underutilized. So that's one thing. The other thing is that, you know, I'm taking that Fourth Street is one of the main entryways for people to get into the complex. Is that correct?
It is, yeah. And you can see in the site plan, that's the primary gateway to the site coming in along Fourth Street.
And to have, given that situation, to have empty storefronts as you come into your property, may not be the most appropriate way of looking at the success of that particular property.
Well, our intent is not to have empty storefronts. So I, you know, we believe that this is the appropriate amount of retail. So, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't have any other questions at this point in time. Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
I have one last question, Mark.
Go ahead.
Have you, and maybe this will be in the more detailed, what staff have worked that we've received, but I'm wondering if you have considered what you are doing with this particular project for energy efficiency?
Yeah, so we're designing it to Cal Green standards. We've got Keith Levis from TTQY, who could speak to the Cal Green standards. So Keith, I'll turn that over to you.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't gotten into great detail in terms of anything specific to enhance the project that way, but we're designing to be Title 24 and Cal Green standards, as Sean said. I think as we get into this a little further, and depending when this budget moves forward, you know, the standards will dictate what that actually is.
Norma?
So you don't have anything specific to share, other than say that you will build it according to these standards?
Correct. We haven't discussed, you know, anything specific in terms of solar PV or anything like that. We just haven't, we're not at that level yet.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other standards that you're considering at this point in time, besides Cal Green? I mean, is there anything going to be done relative to LEED?
Sean, I just want to speak to that.
Yeah, so this is, this is, so we'll be designing it to Cal Green, which is, I believe, what, I'm not aware of any non-affordable market rate projects in the city recently that was LEED, and I could be wrong there. This was not designed to be LEED. I mean, we're open to that conversation, Keith's point. It will be designed to Cal Green standards. When we come back before this commission, we will have a menu of those enhancements, and to Keith's point, because we're purely in the conceptual stage, we typically, we'll get into that level of detail when we get into construction documents, which is, you know, after we receive our LEED's approval. But I'm happy to provide a follow-up to this commission. And we'll be prepared to discuss that prior to the next hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey?
No, I don't have any additional comments or questions, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments, questions of the applicant at this point in time? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the input from everybody. Madam Secretary, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment at this time?
If you'd like to speak on this work-study session item, please dial *9 now. I'll wait a couple of moments. We do not have any speakers.
Okay. Since we do not have any speakers, we'll bring it back one more time to everybody of the commission. And if you have any questions of either the staff or anything else, let's get those questions out now. So I'll ask Commissioner Garcia, last time, any questions, any further questions?
Nothing further, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Is this regarding this item specifically?
Regarding this site, yes.
No, no further questions, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen?
No further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Contras Leo?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, I will put my questions out there. At this point in time, I'm done. So with that, we conclude the work-study session, and we'll move back to comments by staff. Thank you, Chair. Hello? Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to give the commission a quick update regarding the general plan schedule. The hearing was originally scheduled for the upcoming second meeting of October 25th. It had shifted about a week, and right now, we're looking at the November 2nd meeting. So our staff will be calling the commission for a couple of things. One is to confirm your availability for the regular meeting of November 2nd. And second is to schedule one-on-one meetings with you to provide an update regarding the general plan and its current status. Let me, yeah, let me just state one thing. I'm gonna, I'll be the one to state it, but you're talking about November 2nd. And in all due respect, there's three of us that are running for office. And November 3rd is the final day of Election Day. And November 2nd is the day before, and there'll be some, a lot of activity going on. I don't think that it's prudent to plan on November 2nd. I mean, if at all, I guess I would say have it after the 3rd. I'm gonna, you know, Cynthia, do you have a comment?
I think it would be, I think first commitment.
You're breaking up.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah.
As much as I agree with you, our first commitment that we made was to the Planning Commission. We didn't sign up to run when we signed up for Planning Commission, so.
No, I understand that. I'm fair with that.
I mean, I agree with you, we're going to have a lot going on, but maybe they can check in with this individually to see if we'll make the meeting.
Understood, and we will, Min, before I forget, before I forget, let's, Sarah, can we bring Kai Fan back in?
Yes, Commissioner Fan?
Yeah.
She's here.
I'm back.
Okay, so the comment is having a meeting on November 2nd.
Uh, that's fine by me. There's, you know, even if frankly, even if three of us weren't here, we would still have quorum. But I do understand the concern, because it's not just us, but there's a lot of activity, like you said. So I'm fine either way.
Okay, well, I'd like to canvass it as possibly the second or the fourth, and leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would interject that I think the day before a major national election is probably a bad idea. Not running for anything, but I do think that that's probably not the greatest plan for the commission, but, yeah.
May I, may I also just tell on that, I'm actually not really concerned about the commission, but I'm worried about residents prioritizing coming to the commission or making comments the day before their elections. I'm more worried about that, because a lot of community members are going to be concerned, you know, getting off the voting thing. So I think Commissioner Garcia makes a really good point there.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, I'll go back to the other side of the equation. I'll just say that if truly our objective is to, you know, very clearly and objectively go through this general plan, and I suspect, and I don't say it's going to be in the hundreds or the 50s, but I think we'll have a fair amount of people that will be calling in, and a fair amount of people that would also say that they couldn't call in because of the comment of being down, you know, doing something with the voting process or something like that. I'm leaning more towards the fourth than I am towards the second, because I just want to take away any excuse that might be there. We'll follow up with each one of you separately. Okay? That's it, thank you. So Min, specifically, the intent of that meeting would be to talk only on the general plan? That would be our goal? Okay? All right, anybody else have any comments? Is there any other comments from Fan?
No, sir.
I have a question. Did I hear Min say that we have a meeting on the 26th? That that is going to be pushed out, or that in addition to the 26th, we're looking to schedule a separate meeting?
So we were looking at the October 26th meeting. However, the schedule being the way it is, we are hoping to deliver the general plan to you on November 2nd, which is a regular meeting of the commission. But it being for the election, I got some feedback that I'll talk to each commissioner separately as a follow-up.
Understood, thank you so much.
But let me clarify something that I think Commissioner Garcia is also. Is the 26th meeting still going to be held with other items, with other items besides the general plan? Yes, there will be other items held in place. So there will still be a 26th October meeting, and also a meeting on the 2nd or the 4th, or whatever date we can come up with. Yes, we have items. Can I clarify that, Norma?
It does, thank you, Mark.
Okay. All right.
May I clarify that the 2nd would be a special meeting, right? Or did our schedule change for the end of the year?
No, Commissioner Fan, it would be a special meeting.
Sorry.
Yeah, I heard two different, I heard Min is, or Min is this, you said it was, it was gonna be a regularly scheduled meeting if it was on the 2nd?
No.
Okay. So, but that was what I understood.
That is what he said, but that is not correct.
Okay, fine, I'm just, I'm just checking on that one, okay?
No, I grabbed my calendar, yes.
Thank you, so.
Okay.
It is, so answering the question, it is a special meeting, either, either on the 2nd or the 4th, it will be a special meeting?
That is correct, Chair.
Okay, that's what we're looking at.
Great, okay, I will look forward to, well, if that's the case, I mean, I'll just put it on the record now, if this is, if it's a special meeting, there's a reason to have it on a very busy day where we're, a lot of people in the public cannot attend. So I'd rather have that conversation on a, on a regular meeting or on a day that we think more people will be able to attend and, you know, pay attention to what we're doing here. So I support.
Got it, okay. All right. Norma, do you have any other comments?
No, I disagree with that. Thank you for clarifying that, Mark.
You agree with that, did you say or disagree?
No, I agree, I think it is, we're gonna have a special meeting that should be post the general election schedule for November 3rd.
All right, okay, fair enough. Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes, thank you, I do have a few, few comments. One is, I think, in a future agenda item, I'm not sure the best way to do this, I'd like to look at asking council to develop some design guidelines for the downtown historic district. I looked back at the zoning code and when that district was established in ordinance 30-4-C, they had the option to develop guidelines for the district, but apparently that issue was never taken up, if I'm not mistaken. And so there are design guidelines for individual buildings, but I think it's really important, we have this really special place in all of Orange County and because of the culture that's happening there, probably a special place anywhere in the world. It's very important that I think we take that, that district seriously and develop some design guidelines for it. So maybe we get a report from staff or craft a recommendation to council on that. The other item is, I'm not sure, you know, I have a short stint here on planning commission. I'm not really sure how design review happens. There were some references to back and forth with the applicants on the design and I believe there, previously there was a portion of the planning commission that dealt with design review. Currently, I don't think there is, but maybe get a report from staff on the design review process and I'd like to look at utilizing design professionals or some sort of third-party design review on major projects. So maybe see that on a future agenda item as well. And I think my third item is, I'd really like to have a little more time to review some of these projects. Their, the packets go out are quite extensive and just the one weekend is really not adequate to really get into it. So I'd like to look for a way to maybe get those packets out a week earlier so commissioners can get a couple of weekends to look into the projects, really give it the time that they deserve and probably better serve people in San Ana by getting that extra time to review the information. I don't know, Mark, do you have any ideas on how best, best to do that? I appreciate.
Well, let me just say, let me just say that, yeah, Tom, Tom reached out, Tom reached out today and just had a couple of questions. And I think, I know that in talking with other commissioners about certain things, I think number one, you know, what Tom mentioned about having design guidelines for the downtown historic area, I think that if we don't have something like that and it's not part of the new general plan, that's something that we've missed and we've got to take care of. And I'd like to have staff come back and say, you know, here's what can be done. I mean, I'm gonna preface this by saying the other problem we're gonna be dealing with come November is, you know, the fact that probably at least three, if not four of the, of the current planning commissioners will no longer be part of the planning commission or may or may not be part of the planning commission. So that's a situation that is gonna, I think, warrant some new training and new, new programs, new, new guidelines and new ways of, of, of running the planning commission with all the changes that are gonna occur with personnel. I think that, you know, definitely, that's the, the one subject is the design guidelines for downtown is a good thing. You know, design review, what I, what I mentioned was back several years ago, we had two, we had two subcommittees. We had a design review subcommittee and we had a policy subcommittee that basically had, there were three, two to three members of the commission on each of those, those subcommittees. And, and again, we, we suffered from the same situation. You know, commissioners came and gone, came and gone. Some of them, you know, didn't want to work on one committee, they wanted to work on another committee. So, you know, I know that I had a conversation with Min when he first came on board and we discussed the fact that maybe at this point in time, give the ability to have all of the commissioners be able to participate in the design review, participate in the policy reviews. And that's basically how we move forward at this point in time. And I'm still in favor of that, but I think that, I think what we need to do is, if we're gonna do a design review, I think it, it would require some additional professional help that would might, that might very well be needed in this particular case because we're looking at some very large projects. And then the last thing, and I think even Felix will jump in on this one, but, you know, I know he's asked, he's, he's talked to some of the planning commissioners around the state when we've gone to some of the planning commission seminars and learning process, learning presentations and things like that. And, you know, some, some cities have upwards of a month to review the, the documentation prior to the meeting. I think that the fact that we get, we get basically the packages on Thursday and we have to have everything kind of digested, even today, you look at the presentation we had earlier, it's 125 plus pages, there's not a possibility of being able to go through all of that and in, in three to four days. So I, I think we need to look at some process timing. And I, you know, one of the reasons why we went with the work-study process also was based on the fact that we, we were continuing a number of these projects because we had to get staff to go back and get further information. Now what we do is we do the work-study and, and we should air out a lot of the laundry that needs to be aired out so that when it does come time for that project to come in front of us, that we pretty much have answered all of the, have had all of the questions answered by staff or by the applicant or both. And I think that, again, you know, we need to look at process time. And I think, I know that the, the general plan has been the elephant in the room, but I think we need to consider that for the future as far as moving forward to get some processes more, more or less vetted out in the beginning so that we can go through a timely process with this, with the applicants. And I don't see that, you know, I see what we have is a work-study on the first meeting of the month and then the second meeting of the month, we have the, the project come in front of us for final review. That's tough, that's tough. I mean, I just think we need to do something about that that's a little bit more, more time effective for everybody. So that's, that's my follow-on comment to what Tom just brought up. Any, any comments from you, Min, or Vince, or?
I think if you continue to work on the development projects, our goal has always been is to get the information to you as early as possible. We'll, we'll have to evaluate how we can get projects to you earlier. As we do have quite a few number of projects, unfortunately, our staffing is also down quite low as well. So we'll continue to look at how we can streamline some of our processes. We'll do better in the future.
Okay, Tom, do you have anything else that you wanted to cover?
Uh, no, just those three points for today. Appreciate the opportunity to give input on those.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Commissioner Nguyen?
No comment, thank you.
You've been quiet tonight, Ken.
Yeah, I've been quite quiet. But I just, I just want to make one comment. I think the election this year is not end on the 3rd. I think the last couple more days after that, because you are voting now in ballot? Right?
Right.
So I think, I would think November 3rd would be the issue, you know, the election two more, two more days after that, if you're finally.
Well, I mean, you know, that's, I mean, the, the question is staff, staff, we can entertain, you know, right now we're entertaining two dates. Maybe we have to entertain three dates and call it the 2nd, the 4th, and the 5th. Maybe that's the other way of looking at it, I mean.
I, I am available on the 2nd. It does, you have, staff decided to have a special meeting on that day.
Okay.
I'm not running for office, I'm not that concerned.
Yeah, there you go. All right, Commissioner Rivera?
No, no comment today. I'm available, I'll just reach out and I should be available in a little bit.
Okay, Commissioner Phan?
Okay, so I just want to echo Commissioner Morrissey and Sarah McCawson's comments regarding the potential in having a one-week processing period. I know other cities, including my client, we will, you know, sometimes even have two weeks. And I'm not asking for that, I just, but I do think particularly with some of these large projects, they're done in the 109 pages. And having lead Friday and potentially Monday to ask that, ask that question or try to set up meetings can be sometimes difficult. Or, you know, even for me, because, you know, you're trying to go through the, the document and getting the, you know, I thought together, so, you know, I think it'd be difficult or potentially, you know, a little bit of a change in the beginning, but if that's our internal procedures, I don't see why you can't adjust to that over time. I really do hope to look into that. The other thing I want to mention then is that offensive deadline has been extended to the, uh, October 31st. So please fill out the census. This is really how our community gets money, this is how our community gets allocated funding the federal government to offer for resources and it's really something we need to, uh, please fill out the census and save families and neighbors. That, thank you so much.
Thank you, Phan. High Chair Contreras Leo?
Uh, no comments, thank you.
My gosh. Okay. All right. From my standpoint, I just want to reiterate that, you know, I'd like to have, if we're gonna have a special session, I'd like to have it after the 3rd than, than before the 3rd. I want to thank the applicants that came in tonight and met with us. I think it was a very good session for both the projects that we had in front of us. I am a little concerned about, you know, obviously a little bit concerned about the, the way we're handling the retail and in the respect for this, this particular zone. I guess the other question I have is, does, does staff know where we stand with regards to the Bismol project that was planned for between the Caltrans and the Xerox building?
That project is still in sequoia litigation and the applicant and the adjacent property owners are still negotiating the design of the entrance to the project. So at this point, they are still working together. They have not escalated their litigation. There is a toll agreement and two property owners are working to hopefully resolve the entrance issue.
Okay. All right. I appreciate the update on that one. So I have nothing else to say. I appreciate the staff's work tonight on the two projects. They represented well and everything went well. So with that said, the next regularly scheduled meeting is for Monday, October 26th at 5:30 PM. And with no other comments from anybody else, we'll adjourn the meeting this evening. And it is 8:37. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Be safe.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.